Nothing yet? Yeah, but I didn't hear her voice. You killed it? Okay. All right, you know, we, we are still conducting our meetings with the option for people to log in remotely and zoom in and see it remotely. I don't know how much longer we're gonna keep doing that, but we've been doing it, we're in our third year now. All right, I think we got everybody here. All right, so with that, I'd like to open the meeting by saying welcome to the Village of Royal Palm Beach Council Meeting. It is Thursday, May nineteenth at six thirty, and we're so glad to have you here. Would everyone please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
The United States of America, and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Diane, can you please let the record show that all members of the council are present?
Yes, Mayor, I will.
And tonight, we have a special presentation. You all showed up at the right time, or either the right time was happened by chance, because we have with us tonight, we're gonna get a legislative update from State Senator Bobby Powell and our State Representative Matt Willhite on the last session they've had up in Tallahassee. So with that, gentlemen, so glad to have you here, I'll turn the floor over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you each and every council member for allowing us this opportunity. I know you all, I don't wanna belabor time, for allowing us the opportunity to give you an update on the recent legislative session. It is the session, the session that never ends. We will be going back on Monday for a session related to property insurance.
Property insurance.
So I am State Senator Bobby Powell, Jr. I represent the northern parts of Palm Beach County, including the Village of Royal Palm, and I'm excited to be here with my colleague on the House side, State Representative Matt Willhite. I'll just tell you really quick, my district is District Thirty. That will change after what we've done, which is called redistricting or reapportionment. But for now, we still include Cloud Lake, Glen Ridge, Havre Hill, all the towns that are listed. Powerpoint's not up. Well, I can see it. In any case, Royal Palm Beach is the most important place that we go.
At least it is tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members, staff, and members of the community. Thank you for being here and being so engaged in your, your town council here, and, but not to mention for hopefully the scholarships. That's the most important thing, but.
Congratulations, everybody.
Yeah, congratulations to each and everyone if you're for that scholarship. That's an awesome thing that they're doing here with you tonight, so congratulations to you and your family. As Senator Powell said, my name is Matt Willhite, I'm a state representative for this district, District Eighty-Six, and of the towns listed there, all of them are so great, except the one in red, if it does show up. But that's because we're in Royal Palm Beach, and it's so amazing that we're in the best town out of all of those that I represent. You know, as the Senator said, the session never ends. For most of you, if you don't know, we, we normally have a sixty-day legislative session, and then we had a special session already talking about congressional maps, and now we're going back again for another special session talking about property insurance. And I guess we could go back all the time until November if they potentially call us for more issues that we did not get done during the normal legislative session that we should have done. And I know each and every one of your community, members of your community are probably feeling the effects. I know some of you more than others are feeling it dealing with property insurance. I just had a constituent call me today, their insurance company decided to drop them today, and so they're excited because they have a mortgage, and how are they supposed to get property insurance to cover their mortgage, their home? Because if you have a mortgage, you have to have property insurance in the state of Florida. So ultimately, what they'll probably end up doing is paying more, is the worst part about all of this. I do represent all of those cities. This is a makeup of the Florida Legislature. Obviously, there's a hundred and twenty House members, representatives on one side of the building, on the other side is forty senators, and then obviously, the executive branch where the governor's office and cabinet is in the middle of us. Across the street from us is the judicial branch, which is the Supreme Court and the makeup of all their judicial branch. Number of bills that we're allowed to file and things that we do and what, and bills are legislation, pieces of legislation that are important to you or members of the community or, or the business community, or things that we're allowed to file those pieces of legislation on. And every year, there's about three thousand pieces of legislation filed, and only about ten percent passes each year, because that is probably a good thing, because outside the number of pieces of legislations and how they'll affect you, some of, some would say the most dangerous time in the state of Florida is not coming up on June first of hurricane season, it's the sixty days that we're in Tallahassee running our government for you, because that's a little bit dangerous sometimes, people say.
Or the plus days that we have to go back to Tallahassee for special sessions. Now, we did talk about the sixty days, but keep in mind, we also go to Tallahassee for committee weeks, which generally start sometime maybe in October or November, depending on what year it is. We, during even years, we go to Tallahassee in January twenty twenty, twenty twenty-two. During odd years, twenty twenty-three, we go in March for sixty days. The last two sessions have not been sixty days, we've extended to sixty-three days to do the budget and beyond, because now we're going back for special session C after special session B, which dealt with redistricting. There's something called separation of powers, but that's kind of been eviscerated in this last session. I am served, I served as a legislator, part of the, I guess I'll be going into my senior year now, but an upperclassman in the legislature in the Senate. I serve on the Appropriations Committee, the Rules Committee, those are the two most important committees, because every bill that passes on the floor goes through Rules, and every appropriation that gets to the floor also goes through the Appropriations Committee. This year, we had a one hundred and twelve billion dollar budget, and I was fortunate enough to sit on those committees. I also sit on Criminal Justice, Health Policy, and the Alternating Chair on the Joint Committee on Public Council Oversight.
Again, we all serve on committees. Obviously, the makeup of a legislation is bills, legislation when they're filed, they go to different committees to be heard, to be vetted, to be changed, to hopefully make them the best public policy, and so they go through those committees before they go to the House floor or the Senate floor for ultimate final vote. So as you can see, those are some of the committees that I serve on as well, too, there.
Bills that I passed were introduced this year. Bills being passed is very rare, but every year, I've been able to pass a few bills. This year, we passed, passed Care for Retired Law Enforcement Dogs, which gives an appropriation to law enforcement dogs or canines that have come out of service after their, their time as a legisla-, oh, I'm saying legisla-, as a police officer. These dogs have heightened sense of security, they are more wired than technology or humans, so they go beyond and above and beyond, and this allows for a three hundred thousand dollar appropriation yearly for the pot that will allow for reimbursements to officers or people who adopt those dogs when they come out of service. Also passed Senate Bill Fifteen Oh Two, which is Estates and Trust. There's some cleanup language related to Estates and Trust and Family and Marriage, a pretty good bill there. I thought it was important, Senate Bill Four Four, fourteen, was Family Caregivers for Certified Nursing Assistant Program. Many times when somebody is sick and you're dealing with them in the home and you're taking care of a family member, if it's just you, sometimes you can end up losing or quitting your job to take care of that person who's in the home. And when you're doing that, you're not receiving any income or compensation. That's, this is something that's creative, it's an alternative, that's been passed in several other states that will allow for someone who's taking care of a person at home to not only be compensated, but also to receive credits and certifications toward being a certified nurse's assistant after they've taken, taken care of this person. They have to do it for two years. It did not pass this year, got some movement, and we're hopeful to bring it back next year. We also wanted to revise some penalties for nonviolent offenses as well as mental health. Mental health is always important to me and Representative Willhite, because here in the state of Florida, we are forty-ninth in the nation when it comes to dealing with people who have a mental health issue. And as you've seen recently, mental health is a big topic that we rarely want to discuss or talk about, we wanna put it behind people, but there's a lot of things that we can be doing with regard to mental health, mental illness, and we should be funding it. We've got the National Alliance of Mental Illness, who does a lot of things, but they do not have the funding to deal with everything that is happening here in the state of Florida, forty-ninth in the nation. We can do better.
Thank you, Senator. And obviously, as well to, to add on to that, this is Mental Health Awareness Month, so it is important that we recognize that, because I know that your village staff and members of your community know that mental health can be serious, it can be real, and so it is something we need to work on more and more. These are some bills that I filed again this year, I passed five pieces of legislation this year. Form have been signed by the governor so far, the only, the most recent one was helping police officers for their GPS, the information in their vehicles and their, and technology today allows us to track them around, and sometimes that's not good for the officer or the safety of their family when that, those records become public, and you can track an officer's whereabouts, let alone where they live. And so it's difficult to, to shield them and protect them at their job, let alone bringing it home to their family. And some of the other ones are just, and here this, we talk about mental health recognizing veteran suicide. As a veteran myself, and I know some of the council members here, the national average right now, it used to be twenty-two a day, and I know people would hear about twenty-two a day, but it's down to actually just over sixteen a day right now, that veterans are still taking their lives every day in this country, because they can't acclimate back into society or be repurposed into a job that, that meets their, their skills right now, and so they feel the, the effects of it. They sometimes become homeless, start drug or alcohol abuse, and ultimately sometimes take their, their own lives. So it's important to me, and I was trying to, we're trying to try and reinforce how beneficial our veterans are and how we should take advantage of them and utilize them and not allow them to take their own lives by offering them support and help. And then another one that I'm really excited about, hasn't been signed yet, the last one is this Hurricane Loss Mitigation Program. With the rising cost of homes in the state of Florida, let alone Palm Beach County, around about five hundred and forty thousand dollars for a home right now, the median home price. A lot of our homes that are affordable for people and working-class people, service people for sure, are hurricane, or I'm sorry, is mobile homes. And so this is a program to help make sure that they're tied down and they're safe from hurricanes, it has money appropriated with it to have hurricane shelters and, and facilities hardened and testing for that. So this is a, it's a good bill, it had about, it has a ten million dollar catastrophic fund associated with it, funding for it, and another seven million dollars to appropriate with it to start going back in the backlog of what's already there, because prior to nineteen ninety-three and Hurricane Andrews, we didn't have a lot, Andrew, we didn't have a lot of hurricane standards in building construction, and we really changed it. These are prior to that, and so these mobile homes that are people are living in right now are ultimately, some of them not safe, and so by, and reinforcing them and helping them, hopefully it'll make people safer in their homes.
This is thirty appropriations here. We've got the, and this is, a lot of these overlap, because myself and Rep. Willhite, of course, worked together on these appropriations. The four hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the Royal Palm Beach Common Park, Commons Park Corporate Picnic area, that was something that we worked on together, that is in the budget right now. Now, keep in mind that the budget has not gone to the governor for his veto. So we're hopeful, let's keep our fingers crossed, put your hands together, maybe we can not only clap but pray about it, so that it will stay in there. A couple of other things, I think ten million dollars for the Cock Science Center is ultra-important. My daughter has had the opportunity to go visit the Science Center, right there off of Southern, near Dreher Park. Amazing, amazing, great opportunity for our kids to continue to learn. We're investing in technology and education and infrastructure here in Palm Beach County. I, myself and Rep. Willhite have the twenty-five million dollars for the Palm Beach State Dental College, he'll talk a little bit more about that. Five million dollars in the budget for Palm Beach Atlantic University's School of Business, right down in, in downtown West Palm Beach, where there's also a hundred million dollar investment in terms of the University of Florida and technology and energy. And there's also money that we've gotten invested for Florida Atlantic University, the Max Plon's Florida Science Program, Scientific Program, that's seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So working together, we passed one hundred and twelve billion dollar budget, economic development, education, innovation, creation, and disruption in terms of new technologies is one of the things that we've been working on together here to make sure that Palm Beach County is not only the best place to live and work, but also the best place to play.
Thank you, Senator. And obviously, these appropriations that the two of us have, but mind you, there's nine House members and four senators that represent Palm Beach County. So out of all of us, the thirteen of us, we're trying to bring money back to Palm Beach County, and this is just some that we brought back. But we can also tell you, and I know that many of your electeds will attest to this as well, Palm Beach County is a donor county to the state of Florida budget.
Yes, we are.
We send a lot more money to Tallahassee than we get back. We're a very populated, large, large community, county, and a lot of these other rural counties that need so much more services, they, we allocate more state funding to them than we get. So all of this may seem like a lot of money, that I got forty-three million, four hundred and twenty thousand dollars in the budget, that's nothing compared to what is going to some other areas. So we'll keep fighting, and you know, we think these things are important, obviously, you know, right here in the, in, in Royal Palm Beach, we think that, that four hundred and fifty thousand dollars is important to you to offset something in your budget to help you, and you notice I have some of them for Green Acres, Lockshead Grows, Royal Palm Beach, Green Acres, to try and spread money around to all of these communities that need money. But like the Senator said, that twenty-five million dollars for the Palm Beach State College here in Green Acres, in Lockshead Grows, they have fifteen million dollars also in, in private funding for that. So that's a shovel-ready project at forty million dollars in our backyard, and something we know that is dental care is very important to people. You know, oral hygiene is, you know, it affects your diet and so many different things, so your body and aspects of health, so we know it'll be important. And the facility that's at Palm Beach State College now on the central campus is built in like the sixties or fifties and just not with technology and the opportunities there, so we're hoping that this will bring out to the western communities and really helpfully, hopefully help the, the whole western communities as a whole.
These are some of our major session issues. Of course, we talked about the budget, that's the only bill we have to pass. We dealt with the healthcare bill, Senate Bill, what we call HB Five, Senate Bill One Forty-Six, fetal and infant mortality reduction, that was a fifteen-week abortion ban. We also dealt with election integrity, we can tell you a little bit more about that. It creates the election police, that's Senate Bill Five Twenty-Four. Redistricting was major this year, because you're gonna see some changes on your ballots this year. If you paid attention to who your representatives have been, this year, you'll see some changes in terms of who will be representing you here in the Village of Royal Palm Beach. I believe that, for me, I'm shifting a little bit, although right now, I cover the largest parts of Palm Beach County, so right now, you've got the most awesome senator, but you'll get a really, really good person after this. So I'm shifting a little bit to the east, and I won't cover, I won't come to Royal Palm Beach in terms of where I represent, but I'll still come and hang out, because this is a pretty cool place to be. And then we just dealt with a special session related to congressional maps. The reason we dealt with congressional maps in special session is because the congressional maps pass as a bill, and the governor can veto any bill. The House and State Senate maps pass as joint resolutions, which means they are not to the purview of the governor to veto. If he could have vetoed those, he probably would have. He vetoed the congressional map because he could, it was a bill, and in terms of transparency, the governor also has the veto power, but he also had the power to have someone in, in his office draw a map that he did not veto. I'm not sure how that lack, doesn't lack transparency, but that is what happened in Tallahassee recently.
Was that, was that blocked by the courts?
A portion of it was, all they did recently, one map, one court said that they were gonna take it back to the maps that were passed by the legislature, but the next court has indicated that of the two districts that the governor drew, they're only going to reconfigure one, which was District Five. I'm sorry, District, yeah, District Five, which was in North Florida. So the map that he drew with the reconfigured District Ten, which is currently the Valdemings District, has sta-, is standing. So the only district that's changed because of the courts is that North Florida district that deals with, from Tallahassee to Jacksonville. But the other district that the governor changed is going to stand, and that was in the Orlando area. So it's still in the courts, we'll see what happens, but there won't be time to deal with it before qualifying, which is on June seventeenth.
Wow. June already.
The courts have also drawn their own maps to some extent, and given some ideas where they believe the map should go in that northeast area of, outside of Jack, including Jacksonville. These are some of the, as the Senator said, some of the major issues that happened this year during legislative session, and, and, and remember, I mean, ninety-five percent of the legislation that we work on, everyone agrees on. There's usually about five percent that we disagree on, and it's philosophically, it's religious, it's moral, those different issues and stuff, and, and for different reasons, or it could be an election year that some things get brought up as well during an election year that we talk about more. But unfortunately, this year, we probably didn't talk about quite as many issues that we could have that dealt with you sitting at your kitchen table trying to make decisions. I mean, we talk and we look at the foods on the, food or not food on the shelves, we look at gas prices, we look at all these different things in the state of Florida and how it's been affected, and we really focused on a lot more issues that were more divisive, certainly more divisive than I wish they would have been, and I wish we were to really worry about more items that affect people individually on a daily basis. But I will tell you some of the things that are going to benefit you that we worked on is the largest tax package that we worked on in the state of Florida, and if you'll notice, there's some tax holiday exemptions in here, and for the most part, you've ever thought about those being like a week long, right? It's just a short period of time, and if you didn't have the money at the time to go buy something, then the, the tax credit didn't help you no matter what. If you couldn't buy the product, it didn't, didn't matter if you were buying it, saving money. But if you look at some of these, some of these last out two years now, and so maybe you could budget for them a little bit more. If you look at like the last one, it's almost a two-year project for, if you want to impact windows and doors, or the, I think the baby and toddler clothing is, is a whole year, and then there's, the new one is a diaper holiday. Let's face it, young families or mothers that have children, you know, this could really save them some money, because no matter what, they're buying diapers, so hopefully, yeah. Just don't, maybe not. Food is difficult to get right now. So hopefully, some of these things will really have a longer lasting effect on saving Floridians money, because they, they have a longer time span that you will be able to save that money. So hopefully, that tax package will help you, and you will see, although it's being put off, and we'll talk about gas just for a second, although we don't really have a major effect on gas, the federal government does, but starting in October, you'll see about a twenty to twenty-five percent, twenty to twenty-five cent reduction in gas prices, just in Florida, because of the taxes that the state of Florida puts on it. So there will be a little tax savings for you, but you won't see it till October and November.
That being said, we got special session D, that's May twenty-third through the twenty-seventh, that's next week. I'll be going kicking and screaming, because I wanna be home.
We'll wrap it up, I know you wanna be quick, yes, Mayor?
I'm sorry, I, I thought you were done, I was gonna ask you, I, I wanted to go back to the redistricting, I had a couple of questions. One question, we're gonna get a new State Senate district, do you know what district that new one is?
I don't know the new name, the new member of the district. The district will be, from my understanding, it'll be State Senator.
Gail Harrell.
Is it Gail, the Lord?
I heard it was Gail, too, but I haven't seen anything official.
Right now, she doesn't come this far east, she will come over and include Wellington and Royal Palm now in this new district and go up to the St. Lucie area.
All right, on the House side, I understand that Royal Palm Beach has now been split between three districts, is that accurate?
Mayor, I think it's only, I think it's only two, except for one little portion, which I ask about, your new neighborhood that you've approved and developed just on the south side of Southern.
Yeah.
I, the name escapes me right now.
Victoria Grows?
Behind Lowe's.
All the tunnels.
Yeah, behind Lowe's, that's the only area that goes south of Southern Boulevard in this district that now is in District Eighty-Eight. Your new district will be Ninety-four, and at that rate, Representative Rick Roth will be your, your state representative at that time, if he wins reelection and things stand the way they are. And yeah, so Southern Boulevard was a major divider, and most of these maps that they try to draw go by geographical boundaries, whether it's lakes or canals or roads, obviously, that doesn't always happen, we split Tampa Bay right down the middle, which is kind of crazy to do, but at this point right now, District Ninety-four will be your new district number for House, for the House.
But part of it will also be in Ninety-three.
Part of it will be in Eighty-eight.
All right, why am I getting calls about Ninety-three?
Ninety-three is Wellington and then going south.
But there's a little piece you're saying?
There's a little piece that it will be in Eighty-eight, the neighborhood.
It's, okay, I'm sure it'll get worked out.
What I'll do is, I'll get those maps to you.
Okay.
We'll have a printout, or we can email you the link, but I'll have them printed out.
If you give us that, because we'll, we'll put that up and make sure that's available for the citizens to be able to take a look at.
That's important.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Most people don't know.
Yes.
I will tell you this, let me say this, make sure that with the people who will be representing here in Royal Palm Beach, the new representatives and senators, or senator and representatives, that they come before you.
Oh, yes, we will make sure of that.
And also, make sure that they understand home rule, regardless of whether you are Democrat or Republican. When it comes to us going to Tallahassee from Palm Beach County, every legislator needs to know that home rule is important to us, and if you go to Tallahassee and we talk to you about home rule and you get up there and you forget, remember, you've gotten complacent, and what does complacency lead to? Replacements. So just keep that in mind.
Yes, absolutely, okay.
Just, we'll just follow, close if you don't mind here, Mayor. This is my aide, Melissa Santoro's over in the corner, she may have given you a flyer earlier, and this is our contact information for our House office in Tallahassee or our district office, which is in Wellington, my email, my phone number. I would just like to say, Mayor and council members and staff and members of the community, whether it's through reapportionment, that you'll get a new House member or by choice, I am not seeking reelection to the House, which I've had the honor of representing you the last six years, and I appreciate that. You have been a great partner in communication and things in that. I hope that I've served the community well, and you've, you've benefited from it. I certainly have benefited from you assisting me and helping me and allowing me to be your voice in Tallahassee. And Melissa, we appreciate the honor of doing that, not just for myself, our office, but my family, and, and so no matter what, Royal Palm Beach, whether through redistricting or by my choice, I won't be seeking reelection to the House. So it's been an honor serving you the last six years, and I thank you for allowing me to be here to give you a little update, update again this year, and hopefully, we won't be having to come back when we say it's extension, 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 another one by November, but thank you, and I appreciate for being here.
And exciting stuff, I'm not gonna get into this, but Melissa is usually here with Rep. Willhite's other aide, who is now running for office, Tom Valio. So if y'all seen him, give him some support. He's running for the state rep to replace Rep. Willhite, and I believe that as leaders, it's important for us to build up that next generation, so that's really, really cool. My staff who are here with me today, I'm not gonna belabor this, here with us, and you can see the other people, our attorney Diane Andre and Ms. Amyon Hamlet, who's our intern, she is a student at Florida Atlantic University. We can be reached at five six one six five zero six eight eight zero. I am State Senator Bobby Powell, Jr., reminding you that our life of service is indeed a life that counts, political advertisement is not advertising tonight, but I just wanna make sure we said something really, really fast, so that you all are paying attention. We're here to serve you, we depart, we, we entered to serve, and we depart to serve the same way. Myself and Representative Willhite, we are out, unless you have a question.
Any question, any questions, members on council?
Actually, I'll go real quick, thank you very much.
You can give them one and pass it down.
That's all right. Let her get her fifteen minutes. No, no, thank you very much for all that you do and for always keeping Royal Palm in mind when you go up to Tallahassee, and I personally am, I'm going to miss the shake and bake that you guys have brought to us over the last several years, so thank you very much. Real quick, though, Senator Powell, you had had on there is items, what is the mobile unit? It was one of the things that you had as an accomplishment back on, and I just didn't know what the.
Oh, the Mobile Command Center.
Yeah, Mobile Command Center.
The Mobile Command Center is, have you ever seen those police units that are trucks that have the I, that also have all the different technology that tell you what's going on in the community? I believe the Mobile Command Unit is for the city of Riviera Beach, but they've also got a Mobile Command Unit in Jupiter. There's a, I don't know if you all have a Mobile Command Unit, but they're very, very important when it comes to the battle with regard to fighting crime or fighting the opportunity to prevent crime in our community. So this is five hundred thousand dollars that's appropriated to make sure that we are consistently fighting to reduce crime, and there's a lot of technology that are on these Mobile Command Centers that allow police force and units to be situated and stationed outside of the normal police station in terms of operations.
Okay, thank you very much, and then.
And we do have one.
We do, right, we do, but thanks, and that's why I wasn't sure if it was for the, the police department. And the other thing you had mentioned, and I know you're going back and you've been working on it, so thank you very much as far as homeowners insurance. And one thing that I learned over the past couple of weeks was that there were a hundred and seventy thousand lawsuits filed in the state of Florida for insurance, there were nine hundred thousand filed for the rest of the country. So that kind of puts in perspective is, is that how many are actually filed through, how many are paid out, and maybe that's where it starts from, is if we're, right. So as you go back up there, that those are some things, if we can stop it from there, so we don't have less of the lawsuits, I think we would have less of the problem that we're in right now.
Well, that's because we have a lot of attorneys in Florida.
Well, what we can also tell you about that is, the issue is, you have more lawsuits probably because you have more denials of claims, and if our, if, if claims weren't denied so often, we wouldn't see so much alleged, so much litigation. It's something that has to be dealt with. My, my belief is that the lawyers, as well as the insurance companies, need to be put under oath. Here in the state of Florida, when we go to Tallahassee, people come in, they testify before us, but very little times do they want to be put under oath. You can say anything that you want, but when you're put under oath, that is upheld in the court of law, and I would be hard-pressed to say that I will bring it up when members come up to speak, I'll say, can we put this person under oath? And just like in the last legislative session, you'll see the people who control the committees fight so that we are not putting people under oath. But if you're claiming that property insurance is going up, I didn't have any claims, but I don't know why my insurance increased by more than a quarter, more than twenty-five percent, and we, everybody has seen that. But if you're saying it's because there's roof fraud, then say it under oath, and let us be able to dig into what's really happening. If you're saying it's because of litigation, okay, let's put it under oath and let's really, really look at it, because the people here in the state of Florida are really suffering while we're going to Tallahassee to fight against banning books. books. It's ridiculous. All right, sorry, that was editorial.
Anything else? Jeff?
Just really quickly. So what would you guess? By the way, gentlemen, thank you very much. We always appreciate this. What would you guess is the likely outcome of the dental and medical services technology building?
I'm sorry, what's the likelihood of it?
Yeah.
I mean, well, the governor vetoing it, I mean, I don't think that there's a likelihood of the governor's going to veto it. That's PICO funds. And so it's not as likely that he would veto that versus some line items that are project funds more. You know, it's a hundred and twelve billion dollar budget. There's been discussions about him, you know, how many, how much he's going to veto and stuff. They've already seen a lot of the budget and stuff, but I, I think it's, I think it has a very good chance of getting fully funded and hopefully being built. Not to mention, like I say, it has another fifteen million dollars of private funds associated with it. So why wouldn't we want to take advantage of private partnerships to add money into a, you know, a shovel-ready project to go right now in our community that would help us?
Absolutely. All right, thank you.
It was the number one project on the list.
Was it?
Good.
We remain cautious, but definitely optimistic.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Just a, just a thank you. You both work very hard for the village and as a partner of ours, and we appreciate your advocating for our appropriations year after year. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll just say this too. Although we'll still be around, well, at least I will, Will Height will be running for another office. I will tell you this. Your lobbyist is very, very good too, right? He's consistently fighting for you and coming to us and going behind the scenes and working with us and battling with us about, you know, this project's important. You know, we're like, well, this is from my other city. And he's like, no! That's important as well.
Right. I don't think there are any other questions at that. And I'd like to take a moment just to congratulate both of you on your outstanding service to this community for the many, many past years. We've enjoyed working with you, and we wish you well in your new endeavors. And I'm sorry to see you both go, but we can't control what's happening with the Senate, and Representative Will Height is running for District Six, County Commission seat, so we wish you well there. And just thank you so much. You did a great service to our community. Thank you.
Thank you. And I know that we both wanted to just say congratulations to all the recipients here tonight. If there's anything that you, if you want to get involved in government, please reach out to any of our offices, because we can offer community service hours or assist you in anything. But it is important because you are the future leaders and generation of our, of our community. So thank you for the work you're doing. Congratulations. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Yes. Well, I'm so glad all of you were here this evening. As I said, the timing couldn't have been better. You get a chance to hear directly from our state representatives and our state senators on what's going on in Tallahassee. I know we always, you see reports on the news and, and, you know, they tell you, but I think we got a little bit more insight to some of the challenges that our legislators face in trying to represent different districts in the state of Florida. So with that, this is one of the happiest days of the, of the year for me and for all of us, because we get a chance to acknowledge the wonderful accomplishments of some terrific students. And we just want to say, we know the students wouldn't be doing and able to achieve what they, what they achieved if it wasn't for their parents being right there behind them to guide them and help them get the things done that they need to get done. So with that, we're going to go through a process of presenting the one thousand dollar scholarship awards. I'm going to come down and distribute the checks, and my comrade here will have the luxury of calling, calling you up and reading a little bit in your bio. So with that, we'll get going.
Well, good evening, everyone, and congratulations to all of the recipients. As you all know, the recipients certainly know, you met our Education Advisory Board, and they were the ones who, as one of their primary responsibilities, interviewed seventeen and selected ten recipients who are here tonight with their families. So once again, congratulations to all of you. As, as always, the, the quality of the applicants is only exceeded by their enthusiasm, their optimism, and their view of the future, which, by the way, if you ever want an uplifting experience, come to one of those interviews. It is, it is really just that. So once again, without further ado, now that I've allowed the mayor to walk down to the front, when I call your name, if you would step up next to the mayor, I will then read your brief bio description so that we all have a sense of who you are and, and how it is that you have received this recognition. So once, once again, then we will begin with the very first recipient. And by the way, it's in alphabetical order, just in case anybody's curious about that. The first recipient is Alexandra Agate. Alexandra is a long-term Royal Palm Beach student from, for, for the past twelve years, as a matter of fact, and she likes to identify her milestones as she went from being a bobcat to an eagle to a wildcat. So that's a pretty good resume, I would say, offhand, right? She will continue her studies at FSU. Yeah, I knew that. I knew that. I knew that was coming. I knew that was coming. Yep. Initially, be an exploratory major, but the plan is to have a career in criminal scene investigation, CSI. She is grateful, obviously, to her family for all that they've done for her, and she thanks the Education Advisory Board for selecting her. Okay, the next recipient is Jeliana Bergos. Jeliana will be graduating from Royal Palm Beach High School, also with a three-point-nine GPA. She'll be attending the University of Florida. Okay, I didn't hear anything. See? For the summer term, majoring in health sciences. Her goal is to become an orthopedic doctor for a sports team. She loves playing softball, enjoys studying math and science. I need to say that again. She enjoys studying math and science. All individuals are in need of support, she believes, and a support system, and she hopes to become that support system for others. So once again, we congratulate Jeliana. Our next recipient is Kenneth Cias, and I apologize if I didn't get that last name correct. Kenneth was, was born in Wellington Memorial Hospital, and he's grown up here in Royal Palm Beach. He is a valuable member of the community. He has a passion for photography and community service. Kenneth is planning to major in linguistics, linguistics, easy for me to say, at the University of Chicago, and later obtain his Juris Doctorate with an emphasis in international law. Let's congratulate Kenneth once again. The next, the next recipient is Jasmine Gutierrez. Jasmine is a senior fire cadet at Palm Beach County Fire Rescue Cadet Battalion, where she's been training every week since her ninth grade year. She is very proud to be attending Barry University for Emergency Medical Technician, EMT State Certification, while attending high school. In her senior year at Royal Palm Beach, she also achieved an EMT certification. She's been able to ride with fire rescue at AMR. She is also involved with DECA in marketing, the Marketing Academy, since her freshman year, and she just represented Royal Palm Beach High School in the Restaurant and Food Service Management Individual Series and earned a state qualifier to compete in Orlando. So congratulations to Jasmine. Our next recipient is Jenna Kersville. Jenna is graduating from Seminole Ridge Community High School. She's been involved in many different clubs, including National Honor Society, National English Honor Society, Key Club, Best Buddies Dance Marathon, Helping the Homeless Club, and Go Green Club, obviously very busy. Also, she's been involved in girls competitive, you ready for this? Weightlifting. And went on to regionals. And, and so she, of course, loves weightlifting, and she plans to pursue a career in nursing to become a nurse practitioner. So congratulations to Jenna. Our next recipient is Ella Leisure. Ella is a senior at Royal Palm Beach High School. She loves to be involved in her school through various clubs, and will be attending FSU in the fall to study criminology. So congratulations to Ella. Our next recipient is Zoe McCray. Zoe was also born in Wellington Regional Medical Center. I think there's some significance to that. She is a senior at Royal Palm Beach High School who plans to study medicine in the fall. She completed elementary through secondary in Palm Beach County as an honor student, and she is now currently enrolled at the University of Miami. She thrives in her schools, HOSA, and Key Club. Zoe has maintained a cumulative GPA of four-point-oh while being a part of the Medical Magnet Program, where she's obtained certifications in pharmacy, an EKG technician. She is also a certified medical administrative assistant, and she's been trained in CPR. She has more than a hundred, one hundred service hours, and her ultimate goal is in the medical field and to become a pediatrician. So congratulations to Zoe. I had the pleasure of actually giving, being part of the presentation of another scholarship from Royal Palm Beach Rotary to Zoe. So double congratulations. Our next recipient is Ana Oyeda. She is a Cuban immigrant and the valedictorian of the class of 2022 at Royal Palm Beach High School. She enjoys exercising, spending time outdoors. After graduation, she plans to attend University of Florida to double major in nutritional sciences and business administration on a pre-med track. Congratulations, Ana. Our next recipient is Madison Stegell. Madison is graduating from Marine Christian School. Her further education is going to be at Florida Gulf Coast University, majoring in psychology. She played four varsity-level sports, including swimming, cross-country, soccer, and track, was a two-time state finalist and cross-country and regional finalist, five years consecutively in swimming. She is a member of the student government, currently the vice president of the student government, and a member of National Honor Society. Congratulations, Madison. Our next recipient is Jessie Tucker. Jessie has been an active member of Royal Palm Beach all her life, participating in community service and being dedicated to her schoolwork. She finds value in guiding the youth of our community educationally and emotionally through tutoring and through a youth group she teaches at her, her church. She is graduating with her ACE diploma and has completed the IB International Baccalaureate Diploma Program at Royal Palm Beach High School. She plans to double major in psychology and family and child sciences at Florida State University to become a child therapist or a school psychologist. Congratulations, Jessie.
We're going to call the meeting back to order at this time. Thanks, everyone. Appreciate that. And at this time, we will have reports. I'll open up with a report. Today's the third Thursday of the month, and this morning we had the monthly Transportation Planning Agency, aka TPA, board meeting. And there was an item of significance that was discussed and acted on today. As you know, I've been sharing information with you for at least two years, maybe a little longer, about the notion and the discussion that the board has been having for that period of time on the creation of a special fee, transportation fee. And the path to do that would be, as a board, we'd have to make a request or a resolution to the Palm Beach County Commissioners, asking them to put that on the ballot, and the voters would make a determination. Tremendous amount of work needs to be done before we can get to that point, but the item that came on our agenda today was recommended to us in a resolution from our Technical Advisory Council, that we make that resolution, in fact, and submit that to Palm Beach County for consideration. After discussion, good discussion, and looking at the context of where we are now and the work that still needs to be done, we decided to move the issue... work that still needs to be done, we decided to move the issue for reconsideration later on in the year, probably sometime in late November, maybe early December. So we will revisit it then, and we'll see what groundwork we can do between now and then. But one of the points that was clear, and I think I've been saying this all along, is this is something that we really want to get all 39 cities behind, inhabit approach from every city constituent, and their local elected officials are able to give them insights in terms of what are we looking to do? What's the big picture? The big picture is, we're trying to think 25, 30 years down the road, and looking at an environment here in Palm Beach County where we put the infrastructure in place for our public transportation network, so that you actually, all citizens in our county will have a real option of saying they don't need to take their car to get to where they want to go. They can get there just as fast and just as comfortably by taking all of the new public transportation opportunities that are going to be provided. Now, for that to happen, it's going to be a joint effort between the county and their planning and their staff, and all of the cities stepping up and being partnership and that. But the concept is that we're not asking anyone to do anything if there's no funding to do it, and ergo, we get to the concept and discussion of creating a transportation fee. This is something that many other counties have already done, and we are going to be spending time going to visit and speak with some of these counties. And they're going to share with us some of the successes they've achieved and how they've upgraded their public, or in all of their transportation capabilities as a result of this. So I'll keep you posted, but that's where we are today, and it was an important discussion. And as I said, it is delayed for further review until after November, December timeframe. So with that, we'll start with you, Selena.
Good evening. It was very nice to see everybody here today, especially our legislative update. It was always helpful. Our summer and specialty camps are registering students, and there are adult programs that are open as well at the village. So if you call 561-790-5124 for information on that. We do have our senior meal program as well, and that is for seniors that are 60 and over. They feed them Monday through Friday. It's a free program at noon, but you do need to complete a mandatory participation form, and that phone number is 561-753-1241. And what's nice is we already have 20 people there going a day for their free meal, so it's spreading. The Young at Heart is having their last session in June, and they are going to reopen in September for their membership, so you can do that to register again for their season. Concerts in the Park are the first and third Fridays of the month, so tomorrow night we do have a Matchbox Twenty and Hootie and the Blowfish cover bands that are out there. And then, yeah. Yeah, they're going old school. The Royal Palm Beach Community Band is doing their free concert over at the Cultural Center, and that is on Tuesday, June 28 at 7:00 PM. We do have our Memorial Day event coming up at Veterans Park. That's on May 30 at 9:00 AM, and that is with the American Legion Post 367 that is doing that with us. Commons Park, their bike share program, the paddleboards and the kayaks are out there. So when you're talking about modes of transportation where we don't need our vehicle, you can do the bike sharing. So that's out there. Everything will be up and running by the beginning of next month. And then we currently have our second 18-hole disc golf course that's already active out there. And then Veterans Park, they're going to put out an RFP for an ice cream vendor. So next week, they're going to put that out. So hopefully now, not only do we have seeds out there, but now we'll have an ice cream vendor as well. So it's really nice how it's growing. We attended the League of Cities luncheon, or their monthly luncheon that they had, and two things, because we talk about hurricane preparedness. So if you go to readypbc.com or alertpbc.com, are two places you can go to, especially going into hurricane season, that everything that the county has to offer, that they're available out there. And also Zoe McCray that was here tonight also received her scholarship from there as well. So it's nice to see that as a, we're representing Royal Palm out there. We went to the Access Specialty Animal Hospital, did their first year anniversary, and this is a 24-hour facility for animals to go to, so it was really neat just to see they converted a Staples Building into this animal hospital, and it is state-of-the-art with MRIs and everything that you would need for that. I attended the Future of Housing presentation, and that's where they did talk about that the interest rates for, I'm sorry, insurance rates have gone up between 20 and 40% this year alone. And a lot of it they talk about is, it's number one, the age of your roof, number two, the proximity to the coast, and number three, the value or cost of your home, is what they're considering the driving cost or force of that. And we talked about this, that in Florida, how there were over 117,000 lawsuits filed, 170, I'm sorry, lawsuits filed in Florida, whereas the rest of the country only had 900,000. We also attended the CAFSI event that they had with the, for Cultural Diversity Day, so thank you to them and the cultural council. We had between 200 and 300 people that were there that Saturday, so it was really nice to see just an array of various cultures between food and entertainment and cultures that they had and their customs. We did go to the Kayla Cares for Kids Playroom, that's over at Wellington Hospital, and what's really neat is, this was a young lady that received a scholarship from a Young Entrepreneurs Group, and she went on to go to nationals, I'm sorry, and she won it national. So when she went to DC, and what it is, is she was hospitalized with her brother and realized that there were hospitals that don't have access for toys or playrooms or places for children to go to when they're in the hospital. So she now does funds for those to put them into various hospitals. So it was great to see, and now she's in her second year in college. So she stayed with it from high school. And then lastly, congratulations to Royal Palm Beach resident Craig House, who won $2 million in a scratch-off. So we are, yeah. So good for him.
He's like, I wanted to be anonymous.
Exactly.
I think you let the cat out of the bag.
Yeah, exactly. He's already moved out and now has revoked everything else.
Good thing they stopped picketing in private homes.
Thanks. And that completes my report.
Yeah, my report is, I guess, a request from council. I had talked to the village manager and the village attorney about a complaint I received from a resident, and basically, the gist of it is, someone was shooting a BB gun, airsoft gun, from their property into public rights of ways. And my understanding of the situation is, there's nothing that stops that here in Royal Palm Beach. You're allowed to legally do it. I mean, you can't, I'm sure, you know, create a nuisance or endanger people, but it got me thinking that, hey, it might be a good idea to not have people be able to discharge, you know, airsoft rifles and those things in public, nothing to do with their private property, nothing to do with, you know, on their own land, but I really, and unfortunately, I didn't have an answer for him to say, well, you know, I didn't find anything, or I wasn't given anything that said, these people can't discharge their airsoft guns and BB guns, and I know there are, you know, ordinances. I think the county has one that prohibits it in the parks, but I was wondering if that was something at least two other people would want to at least look into to see if it's something that's viable or not. I don't know if the captain wants to come up and address it. I, and I will admit, this was, you know, this whole thing is based on a complaint that I got from some neighborhood resident that, but then I thought, well, if there's nothing preventing it, who knows how many times this is happening in the village?
Councilman, I would need a little more information on it. I ventured to imagine that depending on what they're doing, it could go either way. I mean, if there's two kids playing paintball with each other airsoft, that would be one thing. If they're out there shooting the vehicles going by, or, you know, they're not, you know, careful with their backdrop or other, would be a different story. So I really would love to give you an answer, but I'd need more specifics before I could.
Right, but there, I mean, from the information I got from the sheriff, there's no state law precluding someone for, if my son and I wanted to play tag with BB guns out in the street, we could do it.
I know of no such law either, sir.
Right. And that's what my thought was, is not something I'd like to see, but again, based on a report, don't know if it's that big of a problem. This is the first time I've, something like this has been brought to me, but my thought is, at least look into it, so.
Have them call us. I'd be more than happy to come out and evaluate the situation, engage you for what it is.
There are examples of municipalities that have put local ordinances on the books that regulate and prohibit this. One of the things we would have to look into is the enforcement piece of it, and that would probably require some discussion and noodling to see if, what would be involved with actually being able to, you can put it on the books, but if you can't enforce it.
Then it's worth it.
Yeah. But all that to say, it is something we could look into.
Well, I would hopefully get at least direction. If it's just me, then I don't think we should go forward on it, but people agree.
I think the, I think the direction is let the folks know, if that happens, they should contact.
Absolutely. Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
And that, and then they could address it, you know, and make a determination if there's a problem here or not.
If there's other laws being broken, I understand that.
So that's the action, if you will.
I just had a quick question for the attorney. Who would be responsible for enforcing it? The village or the sheriff's office?
Well, this would be a municipal ordinance, so it does not seem to me to be one of those kinds of municipal ordinances that lends itself to traditional code enforcement. It might be a citation method type of enforcement, but that requires eyewitness, somebody's got to catch them in the act. So, you know, there are logistical issues, but it would be a municipal ordinance that we would be responsible for enforcing.
Kind of like the park ordinance that we instituted, right? With the people staying, not camping, or whatever we had in the park. Maybe, and who knows? And that's the thing, I was just wondering if there were options maybe that we could pursue, or if we want to, you know, ban some, maybe we don't want to say people can't run around shooting each other with BB guns.
I agree as far as an exploratory side of it, because even then, I know New Year's Eve, Fourth of July, there are certain sounds I hear that I'm not quite sure if they're air rifles versus fireworks versus.
Real guns.
Yeah, right.
Real guns is a different ballgame.
Right, well, that's.
We can't do anything.
But that's what I mean, is I'm wondering, yeah, if that's something that would fall into that.
And that's going to be shooting guns any year.
Right, right.
Okay?
Exactly.
I'm in agreement. I would, I would be interested in learning more.
Okay. All right. Got it?
Yep.
Jeff? Good evening. And you've already seen one of the results of the Education Advisory Board here in Royal Palm Beach, those 10 outstanding young men and women who were awarded the scholarship this year, and that as a result of their outstanding effort in interviewing and the hard business of trying to figure out who to select. We had our last meeting of the school year, as a matter of fact, and I got to tell you, it was one of the best meetings that I've seen this Education Advisory Board. We had the superintendent of schools from Palm Beach School District, Mike Burke. He gave an overview, an update, and responded to a lot of serious questions from the Education Advisory Board members. He talked about their upcoming strategic planning activity, like we do. They take it seriously. They do a five-year version of a strategic plan, and just as we do, they reach out to the population that is most directly affected. They reach out to their students, and actually, through focus groups, they get input. There's going to be emphasis on arts and fitness with an increase in the use of the ARCA funds and the one-mill SRTAC that they're drawing from. And he also talked about the hiring of a new chief of school police, the former West Palm Beach Police Chief Sarah Mooney. And of course, she's got a real challenge ahead of her. There's no two ways about it in a lot of respects, but not the least of which is a shortage of police officers. They have 58 vacancies of 300 positions. So she'll be drawing on her 27 years of experience as the chief of police in West Palm, I'm sure, and tailoring it to the special kinds of requirements for school police to put something together. We also have the district chief of staff, Mr. Jay Bogus, who reported on the results of the state legislative session, and you heard some of the comments that were made about some of the acts that have been signed into law. And rather than me trying to cover what he covered in about a 30-minute presentation, which I thought was excellent, I provided all of the council members with a copy of his PowerPoint slides that you all can take a look at. And anybody who's interested in watching that meeting that took place on May the 9th, just go to Palm Beach, to our Royal Palm Beach website. I think the Q and A was of particular interest. You won't find the Q and A, obviously, in that presentation, but you might find the question and answers very informative, especially how the school district plans to deal with some of the more provocative and challenging statutes that direct education. One of the last noteworthy items of that particular meeting was that we had not only the superintendent of schools, the chief of staff, normal principals showing up, which is pretty routine, but also, we had not just one, but two of our school board members, Marshall Andrews, who is our school district representative, but then we also had Erica Whitfield, whose district includes Lake Worth Beach. The reason she showed up is because she's trying to encourage Lake Worth Beach to establish an education advisory board, much like ours. And she brought with her two members of their education task force who stayed after, you gotta love it, right? They stayed after, not from detention, but because they wanted to talk more about exactly how we run our education advisory board. And so we provided a copy of the bylaws or the resolution, which we follow, and had a good conversation with them. And so I want to compliment the board for their outstanding work and for the village support of that board, because it is being held up as a model in the county. Another education-related activity is Royal Palm Beach High School Naval Junior ROTC had a milestone event where they actually put together a banquet for their change-of-command ceremony and their award ceremony. They conducted that over at the Cultural Center, and there was an interesting mix of uniforms and formal gowns. It was quite an evening, and one of the highlights of the evening, in addition to the change-of-command, which is always a special kind of event, handing over the Navy sword and the guidon is a big deal and a very formal and well-done event. But they also handed out awards of a variety of types, but one of the awards was actually a scholarship that was awarded by the Department of the Navy to one of the cadets, whose name unfortunately I do not have, for $80,000. Now, that's a scholarship, and that was pretty impressive. And speaking of Department of the Navy, Chief Sandoval, who is the senior instructor for the Navy Junior ROTC program at Royal Palm Beach High School, has done such an outstanding job, the Department of the Navy has now fully funded and will continue to fully fund that program going forward. And they've also authorized the hiring of another Navy instructor. So the 100 cadets that are now part of the Navy Junior ROTC at Royal Palm Beach High School will continue to grow, no doubt about it. Crestwood Middle School also had an achievement. They have been approved as a Cambridge Academy School, which enables them to matriculate to Royal Palm Beach High School with ACE diplomas. That's a major step that can prepare students for the IB program, for honors programs, and for ACE curricula. So congratulations to Crestwood Middle School. And just as a reminder, I think we all know that Royal Palm Beach High School class of 2022 graduation is May the 23rd, 6:00 PM, at South Florida Fairgrounds, and I am pretty sure we are all invited, as is the Education Advisory Board. So congratulations to all of the graduates. Congratulations to the schools in Royal Palm Beach for doing such an excellent job, and congratulations to our Education Advisory Board. Cultural Diversity Day was mentioned, that was conducted at Veterans Park with CAFSI partnering with the village as they normally do. And if the mayor wants to chime in on this too, I understand that Public Broadcasting System, PBS, is doing a featured piece on CAFSI and as a local community service organization, and it should be debuted pretty soon, maybe even at our Cultural Center. I understand with some conversation about that.
Well, I'm hoping that's where they do the debut. The session was recorded about two weeks ago. A lot of good information was provided on our village. I had the opportunity to participate, and it should be interesting, should be nice.
That's another congratulations to CAFSI for being recognized for their outstanding community service contributions. And I want to mention one other thing. Speaking of individuals providing information to us as we're out in the community, that kind of thing, I'm not sure how accurate this is, but we were talking about earlier the congregate meals and having 20 people attend. I'm, I'm not sure how accurate this is, but we were, we were talking about earlier the congregate meals and having twenty people attend. I was told that there were actually sixty people signed up and, and that the challenge is getting there. Now, we, we have had this conversation about senior transportation over the years again and again. If, if that's, if that's the case, if that information is valid, and like I say, I got it from one individual, then again, we probably ought to revisit the issue and see if there's some way that we might be able to provide access to, to these meals, which seem to be of great value, not only just for the meal, but also to get together with one another, which is really important as you age. So just wanted to put that out there as well.
It was twenty a day.
It was a hundred a week. Twenty different people or same twenty? Okay.
Okay.
You done?
Yes, I'm, I'm done. Thank you.
Hey, good evening, everyone. Back in April, the, we had an issues forum meeting. One of the things, the, the big, the big, well, it's not very the lead, the big thing they wanted to talk about was the Palm Beach County Housing Action Plan. And I'm passing these out. Thanks, Diane. So basically, the housing leadership council and a bunch of lots of different groups and people weighed in on this plan. And it's, it's very dense. I'm not going to go through the whole thing, but essentially, this is now their blueprint for how to achieve a significant increase in workforce and affordable housing. Their vision is in there, their goal is in there, and then there's four areas of focus. The first one is funding and financing, and you'll see that they're going to go after a two-hundred-million-dollar bond to try to do that. Planning and regulatory reform is a second area of focus. Neighborhood revitalization and community development is a third, and then racial equity. As I said, it is dense. I'm not going to go through the whole thing, but it is there for your consumption.
Who's they?
So it's the Palm Beach County Housing Coalition or Housing Council.
It's the county agency.
Yeah. And then lots of different, on the last page, page twenty, you'll see the core groups and the people that were involved in all of the, the four areas of focus. And then the other item that came up during that meeting was the executive committee and issues forum meetings. There was a lot of discussion regarding the submittal of new items to consider. Any issues your government body would like to have addressed by the forum may submit at any time through a formal action of the governing body. To be considered, the following must be addressed: the nature of the item and the statement identifying its multi-jurisdictional significance; how or why the issue is not being adequately addressed at present; and a statement as to why the forum is appropriate place to address the issue. It will be discussed by the executive committee, who will then make a determination and further discuss by the issues forum. So if we think of something we want to submit, that's how we do that.
Okay.
Awesome. And then I just want to send out a heartfelt condolences to the family of Ruby Iain Jackson, Johnson. She was a vibrant member of the Young at Heart Club, and her daughter Denise Hopkins-Johnson was a frequent council member attendee prior to COVID. And so I just want to wish them much peace, attendee, council member, meeting attendee. And just want to wish them much peace at this difficult time. And that's my report.
Okay. Great. Keith?
Not many things I enjoy as much as practicing municipal law, but one of them. My wife and I like to go antiquing, so a couple of weeks ago, we were at an antique store up in Melbourne. Found that.
Oh, cool.
So it's not dated, but the phone number, if you can see. Orchard or Overland Three fourteen forty-two. So that's probably like from the nineteen fifty's. So I grabbed that for the village, and I don't know if we have an archive of old documents or anything, but.
We do.
So.
Historian down there.
Yeah.
It'll be automatically sealed.
I know where that was taken. It looks like that.
It was. You know where that was?
Yeah.
Really?
Yeah.
Yeah.
There's it on there.
The address is on the back. Is that the Royal Inn? But yeah, we found that in an antique store in Melbourne and grabbed it.
That's, that's the, yeah, that's how it looked.
Are you familiar with it at that time?
I was like five years old.
That's your story, she go with it.
I'm sticking to it, yeah. Okay.
So thank you. That's it.
That was the good news?
It's fun.
All right, so that concludes reports then, right? Everybody's completely reported? At this time, if anyone has a petition they'd like to present to the council, now would be the time. No petitions? Okay, I'm closing the floor to accepting petitions. At this time, we'll look for statements from the public on non-agenda items or items on a consent agenda. Diane, do we have any advance requests?
No, mayor.
Nothing on a consent agenda? Ray, does anyone have their hand up out there?
No, mayor.
Is anyone out there?
Yes.
Okay. All right. I have no comment cards submitted. Does anyone here would like to make a comment on non-agenda item or consent agenda? Now would be the time. Seeing none, I'm closing then statements from the public on non-agenda items. And consent agenda, and Diane, can you give us the consent agenda?
Yes, mayor, thank you. Number one, approval of the minutes of the council regular meeting of April twenty-first, twenty twenty-two. Two, approval of a special event permit for the Village of Royal Palm Beach to hold its annual Star Spangled Spectacular at Royal Palm Beach Commons on Monday, July fourth, twenty twenty-two, from one P M. until ten P M. Three, approval of a special event permit for the Village of Royal Palm Beach to hold this Palm Beach Shakespeare Festival at Royal Palm Beach Commons on July twenty-first, twenty-second, twenty-third, and twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two, from five P M. until nine P M. Four, approval of a special event permit for the Village of Royal Palm Beach to hold its Parks and Recreation Month Shakespeare Fest at Royal Palm Beach Commons on Saturday, July twenty-third, twenty twenty-two, from one P M. until four P M. Five, approval of a special event permit for Barky Pines Animal Rescue and Sanctuary Incorporated to hold a five K run and walk with dogs located at Commons Park on Saturday, July twenty-third, twenty twenty-two, from seven thirty A M. until twelve P M. Six, authorization for the mayor to execute participation agreements to sign on to the additional settlement agreements between the State of Florida and Endo, CVS, Tiva, and Alleghan related to the opioid litigation and resulting remediation. Seven, adoption resolution number twenty-two eleven, a resolution of the village council, the Village of Royal Palm Beach amending the Village of Royal Palm Beach Pension Plan, four oh one A Plan, and the Deferred Compensation Plan, four fifty-seven Plan, to provide for certain statutory and regulatory requirements, including but not limited to satisfying those requirements set forth in the setting every Community Up For Retirement Enhancement Act, Secure Act, the Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Security Act, CARES Act, and the Consolidated Appropriations Act of twenty twenty-one, CCC Act, providing an effective date and further purposes. Eight, public hearing to approve resolution twenty-two fifteen, a resolution of the village council of the Village of Royal Palm Beach, Florida, providing for the approval and authorization for the Western Academy Charter School to utilize the official village municipal seal as part of the upcoming eighth grade graduation, further providing that this uses for a proper civic purpose, providing an effective date and further purposes. Nine, approval and authorization for the village manager to enter into a contract with City Electric Supply Company, the lowest responsible, responsive bidder for the supply of LED Cobra head fixtures or streetlight fixture replacement LED Royal Palm Beach Boulevard North Project PW two one oh two, and in amount not to exceed fifty-two thousand, three hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Okay. Are there any questions from members on council? Seeing none, I'll look for a motion.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Your motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any polls? You have no polls? Diane, please set the record show that the consent agenda was approved by zero.
With that, ma'am, I am, I'm sorry, mayor, for interrupting, but with, because Barky Pines is doing their annual event in the village again. They actually are spayed and neutering several breeds of dogs at no charge.
What item is that?
Uh, number five. But they are.
That's the five K run.
That's the five K run, but they are actually doing now so that it is saving a lot, people a lot of money that they don't have to choose that. Plus, there are several procedures that they're able to do at a discounted rate as well, especially because of the.
They're getting funding from.
They're getting a grant and, yeah, and that they're able to do that, so people don't have to choose.
Selena, is that published anywhere, those breeds?
Uh, yes, it is. And if you go to Barky Pines, animalrescue dot com, it is, because she mentioned like seven or eight, and primarily those that are pit bulls, chihuahuas, german shepherds.
Wagyu pullets, so you can talk about.
To go into all that, but yes, if you go to their website, you're right, sorry.
That's okay. All right, with that, we'll move to the regular agenda. The first item is a presentation from the Palm Beach County Sheriff's Office, District Nine, from our captain, Captain Nicholas Niaux. I thought he was ready, I'm sorry. You, you were pulling time for him.
Yeah, it was.
Yeah, oh. Okay, all right. We got it?
Up here.
It's up here, yeah.
We can see it.
That's, yeah, that's. It's, it is. Are you kidding me? It's living in troubled times. I know. Okay, we're experiencing a little bit of a technical difficulty. Just stand by. I, I'd roll a commercial now, but we don't have any commercials.
Technical difficulty, please stand by.
We're technical difficulty, putting like a technical difficulty.
Change the display settings.
We can see it.
But I came prepared. Oh, you updated?
I got a copy of that. I don't know what I did with it.
Ready to go. Thank you.
Okay, you're on, sir. Okay.
Oh, you can't hear you?
The mic? Your mic's not on?
It is now. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
All right. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Manager Liggins, and council members, I thank you very much for allowing me the opportunity to present the twenty twenty-one District Nine annual report. This will be my ninth year standing in front of the council.
Wow.
Four years as the executive officer under Captain Paul Miles, and then five years as the captain. I'm very honored to be here before you tonight, and I thank you for allowing me the opportunity to present my, my last year's report. All right, community events. COVID-nineteen restrictions had a large impact on our community outreach activities. However, we did hold our annual principal and clergy meetings at District Nine. Additionally, as restrictions allowed, we did participate in other community outreach activities, which included, but were not limited to, the bike helmet program, the holiday stuffed animal program with PetSmart, shop with the cop, Easter Bunny Inc., truck retreat, and Feeding South Florida, our Citizen Observer Patrol. In twenty twenty-one, District Nine C O P volunteers provided one thousand, three hundred and eighty-four volunteer hours to operations within District Nine. The value of this patrol, I calculated at minimum wage, equals eleven thousand, seven hundred and nine dollars. These hours included six thousand, four hundred and thirty-three patrol miles, ninety-four park patrols, the issuance of thirteen handicap parking citations, and eight parking warning citations. Our fourth slide is PAL. Regrettably, due to COVID-nineteen pandemic, PAL was closed in, in twenty twenty-one, so there's no information to report on, on that. Support statistics. District Nine is one of four designated areas in the county that provides fingerprinting. In twenty twenty-one, District Nine processed three hundred and eighty requests for fingerprinting services. The mounted unit provided nine point five hours of horse pack patrol in the village. Bicycle-equipped deputies provided two hundred and thirty-two hours of patrol time. Marine-certified deputies provided forty-eight hours of marine patrol, and our deputies processed over eighty-six pounds of unwanted prescriptions dropped off at the district. Calls for service. Calls for service depict the number of calls received from the community. The computer-aided dispatch system, which is also known as CADs, captured a total of ninety-four thousand, six hundred and twenty-nine incidents last year. Excuse me. Of those, seventy-four thousand, six hundred and ninety-five were proactive calls such as business or residence checks, traffic stops, and the like. The remaining nineteen thousand, nine hundred and thirty-four were law enforcement calls for service. Please note, there were one hundred and fifty less calls for service in twenty twenty-one than there were in twenty twenty. Calls for service decreased by nine percent. All right, now the meat and potatoes of the report, the UCR comparison. The Total Crime Index as contained in the UCR is used to measure the crime rate per one hundred thousand individuals. I am extremely pleased to say that has incrementally dropped from eight hundred and sixty-three in twenty seventeen to five hundred and twenty-three in twenty twenty-one. I'm equally pleased to announce that we had a twenty-seven point six percent reduction in the overall crime rate in the Village of Royal Palm Beach in twenty twenty-one. Please note that the slide I have before you lists a number of twenty-seven point nine percent. That is the crime clearance rate, not the overall reduction in crime. Uniform Crime Report, or UCR, captures seven major crime categories. They are murder. Number one, three murders occurred in the village during twenty twenty-one. Regrettably, we know about the one in trails, and then more tragically, the two that occurred in publics across the street. Those were combined for our three. Number two, forcible rape or sexual battery. There were eleven sexual battery cases investigated in District Nine in twenty twenty, and six in twenty twenty-one for a decrease of forty-five point five percent. And let me back up to the first slide, I'm sorry. In twenty twenty, there was one homicide in the village. In twenty twenty-one, there were three, so there was a two hundred percent increase in that crime category. Again, to cover forcible rape, sexual battery, there were eleven sexual battery cases investigated in District Nine in twenty twenty, and six in twenty twenty-one for a decrease of forty-five point five percent. Robbery. There were ten in twenty twenty and two in twenty twenty-one for a decrease of eighty percent. Aggravated assault. There were sixty-three in twenty twenty and fifty-two in twenty twenty-one, a decrease of seventeen point five percent. Burglary. There were thirty-three in twenty twenty and eighteen in twenty twenty-one, a decrease of forty-five point five percent. Larceny to include auto burglary. There were five hundred and sixty-nine in twenty twenty and four hundred and sixteen in twenty twenty-one, a decrease of twenty-six point nine percent. Motor vehicle theft. There were thirty-five in twenty twenty and twenty-six in twenty twenty-one, a twenty-five point seven percent decrease. Six of the seven major categories in UCR all saw significant reductions in crime, with the exception of the murdering. Now that I've given an overview of the categories, excuse me, statistics, I'll provide a more detailed breakdown about some of the reported UCR crimes. Robbery incidents. Of the previous two that I mentioned, one was cleared with the arrest of the two suspects involved, and one was exceptionally cleared. In both robberies, the victims were acquainted with the suspects. Larceny incidents. There were four hundred and sixteen reported larcenies in twenty twenty-one, one hundred and fifty-three less. Those were reported in twenty twenty for a decrease of twenty-six point nine percent. Of the four hundred and sixteen larcenies, one hundred and forty-four were shoplifting cases. That number decreased from two hundred in twenty twenty for a decrease of twenty-eight percent. Out of shoplifting incidents, thirty-five occurred at Target, thirty-one at Walmart, twenty-four at Lowe's, seven at BJ's, and three at Costco. These shoplifting cases accounted for sixty-nine percent of all shoplifting cases in the Village of Royal Palm Beach. Also included in the reported larceny incident are vehicle burglaries, which I will cover shortly. Residential burglary incidents. In twenty twenty, there were twelve. In twenty twenty-one, there were eight or four less. This resulted in a thirty-three percent decrease in this category. Of those three, eight of the, excuse me, of those three of the eight cases were attempts. One case involved a suspect known to the victim, and four cases were to open garages or patios. Please note that from twenty seventeen to twenty twenty-one, residential burglaries decreased by eighty percent in the Village of Royal Palm Beach. Vehicle burglary and auto theft incidents. There were 197 vehicle burglaries in 2020 and 125 in 2021, a decrease of 37.9%. Vehicle burglars accounted for 125 of the 416 reported larcenies. Of those 125 vehicle burglaries, 90, or 61.12%, were the vehicles that were left unlocked. Seven firearms were taken in those burglaries, and six out of those seven, the vehicles from which the firearms were stolen were left unlocked. Additionally, there were 35 auto thefts in 2020 and 26 in 2021, a decrease of 25.7%. Of those 26 thefts, 20, or 76.92%, involved keys that were either left in the vehicle or in an unlocked vehicle parked adjacent to the ones stolen. Traffic. The top three traffic crash locations in the village were determined to be State Road 80 and Crestwood Boulevard, which had 85 crashes, or 20 fewer crashes in 2021 than 2020, for a reduction of 19%. State Road 80 and US 441, which had 73 crashes, or 14 more crashes in 2021 than 2020, for an increase of 23.7%. And Okeechobee Boulevard and State Road 7 had 70, or 21 more crashes in 2021 than 2020, for an increase of 42.9%. Overall, we had 1,348 crashes in 2021, 173 more than in 2020, or a 15% increase. Deputies issued 3,662 traffic citations and 9,999 warnings. The District Nine Street Crimes Unit. This unit consists of four deputies and one sergeant. They're utilized for crime suppression, problem solving, and for support of road patrol. In 2021, the street team made 242 arrests, resulting in 124 felony and 74 misdemeanor charges. They also made 44 warrant arrests. They conducted 1,416 traffic stops, issued 360 citations, 993 warnings, and completed 369 field interview reports. Additionally, they authored and executed eight search warrants and assisted with an additional six search warrants. The District Nine Detective Bureau. Together in 2021, they were assigned 208 cases. They made 39 arrests and had a case clearance rate of 46.15%. Noteworthy is the fact that the national average for case clearance percentages is 19.7%. Our quality survey. As a means by which to gauge the public satisfaction with the services rendered by District Nine deputies, surveys were mailed to 480 people who requested our assistance. Of those, only 49 responded. Of those 49, 95.96% rated us as excellent, while 3.23% rated us as good. Some of our goals for 2022 would be on the top. Crime reduction through public awareness remains a priority. Additionally, traffic safety and obedience to traffic laws remains very important to us. Early statistics indicate that traffic crashes are up in the village, and traffic enforcement has been addressing that increase. And then before I go on to questions, Mayor, I know that you and the council have been very big proponents of the body-on-camera system, so I figured I'd provide you with an update of that. Incrementally, as the process has gone, I've kept you up to date. More recently, we had seven vendors that gave exhibits or demonstrations to us. We narrowed those down to three. From three, we narrowed those down to one. The sheriff's office is now in contract negotiations with the chosen vendor. At this point in time, I can't disclose who that is, because it's open negotiations. I do not have a date as to when these cameras will be out. I don't know of anybody in the sheriff's office that does. However, I can tell you that the issuance of these are a priority for sheriff, branch, and executive staff.
Well, that's good news.
Yes, sir.
To this point, that's good.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
With that, that ends my presentation. If anybody has any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Okay, before we take questions from council, Diane, do we have any prior submissions of public comment?
No.
On this item, no? Great, does anyone have their hand raised?
No, they're not there.
Okay, does any, I don't have any comment cards on this agenda item. Does anyone here like to comment? Seeing none, then I'm closing the floor to public comment on agenda item R1. Questions from members of council?
So first of all, congratulations, Captain. Outstanding job. 27% reduction, is that?
27.6, yes, sir.
27.6 reduction in crime. Was there anything in particular that you would attribute such a large reduction in crime to?
We focused really on staying in their neighborhoods and I mean, very proactive with our traffic enforcement. I think that might have had a big play, but I have to tell you, council members, a lot of, a lot of what we do is we try to displace it. We can't always prevent. You know, for example, our sexual battery rate, that's something we really can influence when a lot of these reports are driven after the fact or after the incident had occurred. So you know, this year they were low, excuse me, last year they were low. I can tell you this year, they're, they're a little bit different.
Okay, well, and, and I would, I would note, at least my recollection is, that even though we still have a large number of the vehicle burglaries due to unlocked vehicles, seems like that number has gone down some. I thought I remember it being as high as 70, 80% or more of the vehicles that were broken into actually were unlocked vehicles in the past. And I would hope that is, that as a result of some of the signage we put out there, the reminders that we constantly go after to tell people, please lock and secure your vehicle.
Yes, you are correct, sir. That number has decreased from last year. I would like to believe that it has had a positive effect, that being the information signs we put out, the homeowners association meetings that we attend, and generally, the message we've been trying to put out for years now.
Well, once again, congratulations.
Well, thank you very much, sir, I appreciate that. But what I want to point out to the mayor and the council, while I appreciate the congratulations, I can't do it. I have to give credit to the men and women that are on the road, the people that are out there at night patrolling your neighborhoods while we're home sleeping, myself and Lieutenant Director, but by and large, the credit has to go to the people out there where the rug meets the roof.
The foot soldiers.
Yes, sir, correct.
Congratulations to the team.
Diane, do you want to comment?
Thank you for that. I appreciate your whole team and your leadership to them. I do have a question about the traffic accidents, and wondering if there's some common threads. Is it running red lights? Is it trying to make U-turns on left and people going right? Is there a common thread?
I will answer that for you. Well, I printed that information out, pulled it, just give me a second to find it.
Good question, because I was wondering the same thing.
Especially considering the intersections that they.
As we talk about reducing traffic accidents.
Right.
Maybe this would help inform us a little bit.
Right. And then especially considering the intersections that were identified.
Right.
And the increases in them, so yeah.
Yeah, I can tell you that the majority of them, I did pull it, and I could have, I thought I put it in here. I have a lot of other information about statistics in here. I could tell you that the majority of them, from my recollection, were distracted driving, angular accidents, or rearenders, not, not particularly people running red lights and T-boning each other.
Okay.
If you look at the warrants issued or citations issued, do you know if there's any number of that, that was issued for being on their cell phone when they shouldn't be?
I could find that out, sir, but I don't have the answer.
Because that'll be interesting number to understand how that fits into the big picture.
See, that, that's very difficult to prove. I could tell you, one day, I myself initiated a traffic stop on Southern Boulevard right around Lampson Lane. For someone that was doing that, you could tell the light turned green and they just didn't move. And when you look, you can clearly see it. The minute I pulled them over, you know, they were allegedly on their map, you know. Maybe they were, maybe they weren't.
They were on their map?
Map, yeah, they were using, you know, like Google Maps.
So is that, but isn't that, is that authorized?
Yes, it is.
Wow, I thought it was any use of the cell phone was not authorized. So there's a little loophole there, huh? Okay. Don't tell anyone. I'm sorry.
No, you're right.
Take that offline.
Yeah, it's out there already, okay.
You got it right.
We, we have to talk to the legislature.
Plug that, plug that loophole.
Plug that loophole. Okay. Did you have a comment, Richard?
But thank you very much to you and your staff, and there are several times I've gone in there for questions or we need something, and everyone's been wonderful, thank you. And my question was the same as Councilwoman Verdesky's in that, because I do remember last year, the Okeechobee and Royal Palm Beach Boulevard intersection, and I think it was they were making wide turns when they were making the turns, and a lot of it were running into each other. So that's a good question, especially as State Road 7 and Souther that we talk about a lot expands, and that's one that did increase with that. My only question that I had, the other question I had, was the report, the way the statistics are reported, are you changing that next year? Was that changed for this year?
That's the implementation of the NIBRs, that's going to be a sheriff's office decision. I'm not sure when or if that'll be implemented.
Okay.
And that'll change a little bit from UCR, if in fact it is implemented for us, because the way UCR works, it captures the biggest crime.
Right.
Whereas NIBRs captures every crime.
Okay.
So let's say someone goes in and punches a clerk in the face and breaks his nose, and let's say a sore, that would be considered aggravated battery. If they would go over and start throwing things over and committing vandalism or on the way out, UCR would capture the most egregious offense, and not the minor ones on the way out. NIBRs captures everything.
Okay. So then the numbers, so these are true numbers then compared year after year?
That is correct.
And then next year, though, that's where it's going to kind of, we have to piece together.
It could potentially change if we switch to NIBRs. I don't know that we're going to do that. Some places have, we have not. But what you're seeing is an accurate representation. It's comparing apples to apples last year to apples the year before. Yes, so yes, it's accurate.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. And Councilwoman Verdesky, I apologize, I'm really trying to find in my notes here, because I.
It's okay.
I knew when we had the traffic crashes that there might be a question about it, and I pulled the three intersections and what the causes were. I don't seem to have it here, however, I will tell you.
You could send out a little follow-up, you could do a follow-up after.
Yeah, it's not red light running or anything else.
Any other questions, members, council?
Just thank you.
Captain, you're our captain, and we appreciate your leadership. Congratulations again for graduating from the FBI Academy.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
That was a great achievement, and it brings great credit upon you and upon the village of Royal Palm Beach.
Thank you very much.
And, and, and thank you to all of your team, every one of them.
Thank you.
We really appreciate it. And I just want to share to the public that our top priority is to have a safe city for you to live in. We want everyone who lives here to feel safe all the time. And the, if you look at the trend over the last five years, I guess, you can see the trend clearly is, that is happening. The, all of the rates are going down, and if you look at that trend line, it's going down, and we want to continue to do that. And one of the reasons why that's happening is because we have a team here who doesn't just sit back and wait for something to happen. They are very active out there, and ahead of the power curve, I would say, in terms of what's going on. And the other thing is individuals that don't live here coming into our town, and that's something that they've been addressing. To that end, I just have one other question. The license plate reading capability, how's that going? And is that?
It's working very well for us.
Does that click in for you to actually?
It's working very well for us, yeah.
Okay.
Sorry, now that you said that, no, the one thing that, because you did mention about that as far as people coming in from, into the neighborhood that don't belong here, and I know the governor was talking about that if you cross county lines, have you, do we have much, I know we've talked about other areas within Palm Beach County that they're coming in, but have you found people in Palm Beach County or in the village that belong, that originated in other counties?
Yes, ma'am, we have, but please let me go ahead and clarify what the license plate reader does.
No, no, I know the license plate reader, I was just saying is, yeah.
Yeah, but I just want to make sure that the people that might be watching this virtually understand.
Yeah, that would be good.
Okay. Some people are under the misconception that the license plate reader is a Big Brother type of system that watches everything that goes on, and if your tag is expired, you're going to get a ticket in the mail, or those types of things. If you're speeding, you're going to get it. It's not. The license plate reader is reactionary. Let's say we have a missing child, and that we know what kind of car the child was taken in, we could go ahead and enter that license plate reader into the system, excuse me, that license plate into the system, and if crosses any license plate reader anywhere, will be notified of it. Similarly, with a silver alert, stolen vehicle, anything. Now, we can use it, let's say under the same circumstances, and I don't want to divulge too much, but we can use it as a reactive tool as well, under the same scenario I just explained to you. Let's say we have a, you know, description of the car and a license plate, it hasn't been entered in the system yet, but we can go back and check the system to see if it ever came into the village anytime. So we can go backwards and use it too, but it, it's not the type of thing where we're going after people for unnecessary things. It's reserved for the most severe crimes, usually felonies, and it's merely investigative tool.
And then there has been where you have seen people in Palm Beach County or in the neighborhood that did not originate in the county?
We've arrested people in the village from other counties, and we've arrested people in the village from other municipalities.
Thanks.
Yes.
Anything else? Once again, thank you, Captain, and that's, we really appreciate the work you've done, and continue to keep the good job going.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Okay, moving right along now, we're agenda item, regular agenda item number two is a public hearing to consider application 21-127, an application by Stephen E. Mayott, Architect Inc., in adoption of Resolution 22-10 confirming the council's action. The applicant is seeking a site plan modification in order to convert the use of the front 31,400 square feet of an existing building from commercial industrial slash wholesale to a self-storage facility, along with various site plan modifications to accommodate the intended use for an existing building located at 330 Business Parkway. This is a quasi-judicial hearing, so you'll have to square some folks in.
Thank you, sir. If the applicant could approach the podium. Bradford, while they're approaching the podium, I'll swear you in at the same time once they get there. Thank you, sir.
Mm-hmm.
Can you state your name for the record?
I'm here, sir.
Mark Ford. Thank you, sir. This is a quasi-judicial hearing. Could you raise your right hand for me, Bradford, you as well? Do you swear from the tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you. I'll turn back to the council and ask if there are any ex parte disclosures on 21-127?
None.
Thank you.
Bradford, you're on.
Okay, thank you. The app, good evening, everyone. The applicant is seeking approval for a site plan modification in order to convert the use for the front 31,400 square-foot portion of an existing building from a commercial industrial wholesale use to a self-storage facility use, along with various site plan alterations to accommodate the requested conversion. Property is located 330 Business Parkway. Village Code Section 2632-F5B8. Intended use of all buildings and structures requires that the intended use for each building be labeled on the site plan. In this case, the 31,400 square-foot portion of the existing buildings intended use was commercial industrial wholesale, and was labeled as such on the approved site plan. Now, the applicant is requesting to change the intended use to self-storage facility. The various site plan alterations to accommodate the requested conversion include introduction of a security gate, modifications to the internal site circulation, landscape improvements, and other minor improvements associated with the new allowed principal use. Here's an illustration of the landscape plan. The additions to the landscape plan brings the site up to current village code, landscape code. In reviewing the application, village staff considered conformity with Chapter 26 of the village's code of ordinances, specifically the proposed project meets the requirements for the Industrial General Zoning District, as it pertains to parcel size, parcel width, setbacks, purview area, parking requirements, landscape areas, and maximum building height. The Planning and Zoning Commission considered the application on October, April 26, 2022, and recommended approval by a vote of five to zero. Overall, the proposed site plan modification meets the village's requirements, and staff is recommending approval of this application. With that being said, Mayor, I'll turn the floor back over to you. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Bradford. Does the applicant choose to make any remarks, comments?
Just in general, the existing site already has, you know, storage use as the primary use there. Just to be clear about that. So it's converting a portion of the building that had another use to also be self-storage.
So you expand, you're expanding it.
Right, expanding the amount of self-storage, but not expanding the building.
The building, right, okay.
Right. And just in, generally speaking, it's a less intensive use and more in keeping with that, that area.
Okay.
And should just bring down the level of traffic and be better for the neighborhood, really.
Okay. All right. Diane, do we have any comments, advance comments on this agenda item?
No comments, ma'am.
Well, you have any hands raised out there? All right, I have not received any comment cards on agenda item R2. Is anyone here who would like to make a comment? Seeing none, I'm closing public comment on agenda item R2. Comments from member on council? Questions? If they're on, then I'll look for motion.
Well, actually, I'd just like to say, I mean, I understand that you're keeping it in with what's allowed for the property. I just like to say that unfortunately, the tenants that were there had to be removed in order to make this change. So I just like that stated is that, you know, unfortunately, we did have business owners in the village that then had to be relocated because of this change. But I understand you're complying with our code.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Item R2.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? You're no opposed, Diane, please let your record show. You have no opposed, Diane, please let the record show that Agenda Item R2 is approved 5-0. Good luck, sir.
Thank you.
Agenda Item R3 is a public hearing to consider variance application 21-115, an application by Kimberly Horn and Associates to allow a variance from Village Code Section 23-49 Sub B, Sub 18B, to eliminate a portion of the required bypass lane along the one-way access to the drive-through on the northwest sides where Village Code requires continuous 10-foot bypass lane for a property located at 11001 Southern Boulevard within the Southern Palm Crossing Shopping Center. This is a quasi judicial process and we need to have people sworn in.
Thank you, sir. Your name for the record, sir?
Joshua Hornig with Kimberly Horn.
Thank you, sir. Could you raise your right hand for me? Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, sir?
I do.
Thank you. I'll turn back to the council and ask if there are any ex parte disclosures on 21-115?
None.
Thank you.
Okay, Bradford?
Great, thank you. The applicant is requesting a parking variance from Village's Code of Ordinances, Section 2349B18B, that requires that a bypass lane measuring a minimum of 10 feet be provided for a property located at 11001 Southern Boulevard and situated within the Southern Palm Crossing Shopping Center. The particular site is highlighted here in green, just west of the current Starbucks location. The required bypass lane shall be clearly designated and distinct from the queuing area and shall run the length of the queuing lane. In lieu of the required bypass lane, the applicant is proposing two points of egress from the queuing lane to exit the drive-through lane. The first adjacent to the menu board and the second along the west side of the building where the pickup window is located. You can see on this slide here, the areas that do not include bypass lane, the north of the building, and what shows the drive-through lane exit points. Various requests is being made in conjunction with a site plan modification, special exception architectural approval request in order to allow for the residential, or I'm sorry, the restaurant development. The applicant contends that a full bypass lane is provided for the eastern side of the building entry to the queue with a break in the curb to allow for a customer to exit at the north, northern apex of the queue. This is then a break until the reemergence of the escape lane at the earliest physical possible point on the western side of the building. It also stated in the justification statement that the general intent of the requirement for a bypass lane is to provide an option for vehicle customers to change their mind, which allows for fewer cars in the queue in those circumstances. Village Code allows village council to grant variance to the parking code when special conditions and circumstances exist do not result from the actions of the applicant, will not confer on the applicant any special privilege, and a literal interpretation of provisions of the division would deprive the applicant of rights commonly enjoyed by other properties. That's a variance granted, is a minimum variance that will make possible the reasonable use of the land will be in harmony with the general intent and purpose of the division and will not be injurious to the area involved or detrimental to public welfare. Village staff generally agrees with the applicant that the proposed design meets the intent of the requirements to its furthest extent possible without negatively impacting the existing development. The Planning and Zoning Commission considered the application April 26, 2022, and recommended approval by a vote of five to zero. And again, staff is recommending approval of this variance request. With that being said, Mayor, I'll turn the floor back over to you. Thank you.
Okay, thanks Bradford. Does the applicant want to make any comments?
No, Bradford did a great job. We had a presentation prepared, but much of the same information is presented there, so.
Okay for you?
He did, yes.
Okay.
And I'm joined by my design team, planning team, and ladies attorney for any questions.
Do you have any questions? All right, Diane, we have any prior submissions of public comments on this agenda item?
No.
No? Ray, we have any hands raised out there?
You're leaving me to it, okay.
Okay. I don't have any public comment cards on this agenda item R3, but if anyone here would like to speak, now would be the time. Done. I'm closing public comment on Agenda Item R3. Open for comments from members on council.
I do have a couple of questions. I don't have a problem with this at all, but Bradford, can you go back to the slide? It's the layout, or you can leave this one, actually, you can probably show me on here. How's the traffic pattern going to change because I've passed by several Starbucks and I can see the cars lined up? So just so I have a clear understanding of, how's the flow supposed to work in this area?
Okay, so I moved back to this slide here and you can see the arrows. This is the direction of traffic, so this
You haven't moved yet.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay.
I'm showing my screen now, okay.
That's the one, okay.
So here are the, the direction of travel.
Right.
So one of the biggest things that is changing is, is that on the west side of the building, of course, you will have the drive-through lane, you will have two-way traffic in this drive aisle. This drive aisle will be converted to a one-way in between the existing, you know, the inline store building that has Starbucks on the very end.
Okay.
So it will be one-way, it'll no longer be two ways. And so the idea is that you could either wrap around from the current Starbucks location, enter the drive-through, or enter the drive-through through this drive, this drive aisle here. And you would exit, have an opportunity to exit and go west, or exit and then get back onto Lampstein Lane.
Okay, so either way, they're still gonna have to go back to the same way that you would, that you would exit in there? And I'm just wondering, is there going, do you foresee that there's going to be an issue with the traffic flow, considering it's kind of tight in there to begin with?
We don't feel like there will be a, an issue. This, we feel as though there is ample opportunity for this free flow of traffic, whenever they're trying to get from one end of the shopping center to the other. And there's ample stacking theoretically, that you're not gonna affect that east-west travel from one end of the shopping center to the other.
Okay, and the other businesses in there would not be impeded by these cars waiting out there?
We, we don't feel as though they would. There's, we feel as though that there's ample stacking.
For that, so it doesn't interfere with that, okay. And then my other question actually for the applicant was, and I believe it was asked at P&amp;Z, but is the current location going to remain open until the new location is open and operating? Or are you closing one in between?
Uh, no, it will remain open until this is ready to go and then they will move it.
Any other questions?
I have a question. Bradford, on the west side, where, yeah, where you're pointing, is that overflow parking? Not in the drive-through lane, but west of that? Is that overflow parking or is that, I'm not sure what those lines are? So, that's outpark, okay. So where is the overflow parking then to the north of the drive-through lane?
So the idea, so the stacking for the point of service starts here. So this is where you would pay.
Right.
And our code requires a certain number of stacking lanes and they have provided those number of stacking lanes. And here they are, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, and even to 10, without interfering with these parking spots stalls there.
So there's one, two, three, four, five, six parking spaces?
What the site is not showing is all the parking along Southern Boulevard
North.
And all the parking north of the, of the
Thank you, that's what I'm asking about.
There's plenty of parking all the way, like on this line on the south side. There's, that's all parallel or perpendicular parking.
Great, thank you. Okay, got it.
Any other questions? So the bottom line, Bradford, is you're saying you believe this will work.
I do, yes, sir.
All right, if there are no further questions from members on council, I'll look for a motion.
Motion to approve regular agenda item R3?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have no opposed, Diane, please let the record show that Agenda Item R3 was approved 5-0. So where's your timeline?
It's ASAP.
Really?
I'm gonna go forward right away.
Okay, great, well, good luck, okay?
Actually, I think we have another agenda, right? Another item?
Oh, you're staying up for the next one?
Yep.
Okay. Agenda Item R4 is a public hearing to consider application 21-116, an application by Kimberly Horn and Associates in adoption of Resolution 22-09 confirming the council's action. Applicant is seeking a site plan modification, special exception use, architectural approval to allow a restaurant with drive-through for an existing 4,000 square foot building located at 11001 Southern Boulevard, situated within the Southern Palm Crossing Shopping Center. But he has, do we have to be sworn in again?
He does not, sir. He's been sworn in, but I do need to ask the council if there's any ex parte disclosures on 21-16? Thank you, sir.
Bradford, you're on again.
Great, thank you. I'm gonna, given the discussion that we had on this item with the prior item, I'm gonna skip ahead to my presentation if nobody objects. In reviewing this application, village staff considered conformity with Chapter 26 of the village's code of ordinances, specifically the proposed project meets some requirements for the general commercial zoning district in Section 2661, planned commercial developments as it pertains to parcel size, parcel width, setbacks, pervious area, parking requirements, landscape areas, maximum building height. The Planning and Zoning Commission considered this application. They recommended approval by a vote of five to zero and staff is recommending approval of this application. And I'll turn the floor back over to you, Mayor. Thank you.
All right, thanks Bradford. You want to make any comments? No?
I'm good.
Okay. Diane, any prior public comments committed?
No comments.
For Agenda Item R4? Nothing? Ray, any hands raised for Agenda Item R4?
No, Mayor.
Okay, I have not received any comment cards, but if anyone here would like to comment, now would be the time. Seeing none, I'm closing the public comment to Agenda Item R4 and comments from members of council.
I think a lot of people down there are gonna like a drive-through.
Well, it's been talked about for a while, right? If there are no comments from members on council, I'll look for a motion.
Make a motion to approve regular agenda item number four.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We have no opposed. Diane, please let the record show that Agenda Item R4 was approved 5-0.
Thank you.
Good luck, all right? Okay, Agenda Item R5, somebody else is talking?
Bradford's secret here.
Bradford, we can hear you.
I quiet him up.
Public hearing, Agenda Item R5 is a public hearing for first reading to consider ordinance number 1026, an application 22-4 zoning text, an application by Reed and Associates regarding a zoning text amendment to Chapter 26 of the village's zoning court to include senior housing facilities as a special exception in the industrial general zoning district. And this is also a quasi judicial process, so.
Yes, sir, thank you. Can you state your name for the record, sir?
Frank Banham.
Thank you, sir. Could you raise your right hand for me? Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, sir?
I do.
Thank you. I'll turn back to the council and ask if there are any ex parte disclosures on this item?
None.
Thank you.
Bradford?
Bradford, you're unmuted.
At least at this end, he is definitely unmuted. Oh, no. Where'd he go? He's got, still got the screen, too. Okay, Bradford. One of the other ones was unmuted themselves. That was what the noise was, I knew you.
Can everybody hear me?
Yeah.
What happened to you?
Because I can no longer hear you guys, so can I get a thumbs up from somebody and I'll just do my presentation? Okay, all right. The applicant is proposing an amendment to the village's zoning code at Section 2693-3 to allow a senior housing facility as a special exception use in the, I'm sorry, the the current senior housing facility is located within an industrial zoning district and is considered a legal non-conforming use. The applicant would like to expand the existing senior housing facility. However, the legal nonconformity cannot be expanded or enlarged until village code is changed. Therefore, the applicant has applied for a text amendment in order to make the existing use a codified special exception use in the IG zoning district in order to allow the expansion to proceed. The Planning and Zoning Commission considered the application on April 26, 2022, and recommended approval by a vote of five to zero. Staff requests a recommendation of approval be submitted to the village council regarding this application number 22-4 and ordinance number 1026. And with that being said, Mayor, I'll turn the floor back over to you. Thank you.
All right, thanks Bradford. Blackbird, like to make comments?
I'm really just here to answer questions if you have any.
All right, so you're satisfied with the way it was presented?
Absolutely.
Okay. Diane, we have any prior requests for public comment on Agenda Item R5? None? Ray, anyone have their hand raised for Agenda Item R5?
No, Mayor.
Okay, I have not received any public comment cards on Agenda Item R5. If anyone here would like to comment, now would be the time. Seeing none, I'm closing public comment on Agenda Item R5 and looking for
Unmuted.
Okay, if you say so. Looking for comments from members on council. Is that, is that my girl?
That's your girl, she's back. She missed you. I just have a quick question, I think, I don't know if it's for me or for Keith, but why, is this just like a cleanup as to add it in there? Because if they've been operating similar in this capacity?
As Bradford said, they're illegal, they're illegal nonconforming, so they're adding it so that they want to expand, so they're adding it to be an approved special exception use so that they can do their expansion. Because you can't expand a nonconformity, illegal nonconformity.
They have to become legal first.
Correct.
Okay, because what I'm saying is because they are currently operating in this capacity now, aren't they?
Since 1984.
Right, so that's why this is just a technicality?
It's to allow them, to make them a legal use, to allow them to expand.
So are you, right, I understand that, but what I'm saying is you're expanding into different
Are you expanding your service offering?
Yeah, your service is expanding or are you changing?
They want to add additional rooms to the facility. It's gonna be a different type than what's there. They want to add surgical rehabilitation, short-term. Everything there now is long-term.
Okay, so then they
Those are service modifications.
Right. So, right, that they're gonna be offering and that's
They had to get legal and
Correct, and where I'm kind of like going down a path that, so then are you gonna expand the building? Are you then coming in for
We'll come back in with a site plan and architectural review and special exception.
So it is step through that, okay. Gotcha, thank you.
Any other questions, members on council? If there are none, I'll look for a motion.
Motion to approve regular agenda item number five.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? No opposed? All right, so Diane, let the record show that the first reading of this ordinance, 1026, was approved 5-0.
Yes, Mayor, well.
We'll see you, we'll see you in a month or so, I guess, okay. Agenda Item R6 is a public hearing for first reading and approval of ordinance number 1029, amending Chapter 6 Buildings and Building Regulations at Article, Article 9. Was that Article 11? Am I reading that wrong? Article 11. Yeah. Standard Housing Code to add entirely new Division 4, landlord tenant notice requirements in Section 6-200, notice of termination of monthly residential tenancy without specific duration. In 6-201, written notification requirements related to rental payment increases for all rental tendencies to require 60 days written notice for termination of tendencies and increase in rental rates. And we'll go to Keith.
Thank you, Mayor. This is first reading of a ordinance that was, the concept was discussed and there was consensus at the strategic planning exercise to bring this ordinance back. This is modeled after, oh, there's a couple of jurisdictions that have this recently on their books. One is down in Miami-Dade and then Lake Worth Beach is another. This is an attempt to try to get a grasp on the unprecedented increase in rent that residential renters are experiencing. As you indicated when you read the title, this would require a landlord to give at least 60 days notice prior to increasing rent more than 5% and it And it gives tenant the opportunity to accept or try to negotiate or reject it and move out. It also requires 60 days' notice in a situation where you are out of the lease and you're simply kind of on a month-to-month situation. It would require 60 days' notice to stop that tenancy as well, yes.
But that's only, what triggers it if the rent, potential rental increase is five, higher than 5%?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay. Do we have any public comment cards prior to the meeting submitted on agenda item R6? Ray, anyone with their hand raised?
No mayor.
Okay. I do not have any public comment cards submitted. Is there anyone here who would like to comment? Seeing none? I'm gonna close public comment on agenda item R6, but I'd like to make a couple of points on this, on what our objective is here. We're living in a very trying environment for people who are rental, being hit with astronomical increases that lead most of them to say they can't live there anymore. The way the statutes are currently written, when that happens, these people only have 15 days to find a new place to live. And what we're looking to do here is to give them a little bit more relief and more time for them to make such a major transition when they get notice of such a situation. And that's the purpose of what we're looking to accomplish, to help those renters who are within the boundaries of Royal Palm Beach in those kinds of situations that may be coming, that have come up and may be coming up. So that's, that's the intent. Anything I need to add to that, Keith?
No, sir, that's a accurate synopsis.
Okay. So having said that, I'll open for comments for members of council. If there are no comments, I'll look for a motion.
Just a quick question, I don't know if anyone can answer. First of all, thank you for bringing this up because it is something that many renters are having an issue with. Do we know the landlords, if they're increasing annually? Or is it because of homeowner's insurance has gone up, so this is how they're recouping based on that? Do we know?
Do we know why they're increasing?
If that's a reason, you know, if you did it once, okay, well, yes, I had, these are the reasons. But if you're constantly doing it year after year after year, that's something, that's a different reason. I just don't know if we, do we know?
I'll just sum it up as that's the market we're operating in there.
Okay. Thanks.
Leave it at that. Jan, do you want to?
I was just, I was just thinking that part of it also is there was a moratorium on evictions and all that stuff and so.
Because of COVID.
And so probably now they're trying to recoup what they lost.
It could be something, like I said, all of that falls under market conditions.
How, if, if this passes, how will we notify landlords and tenants?
How do we?
Communicate.
Well, there need to be an educational campaign.
You're gonna have to let people know about it.
Let people know about it. You know, enforcement's gonna require tenants to.
Reporting.
Report it.
Yeah.
And then we'll have to.
And that given their 60 days, they.
We'll have to have sufficient evidence. So, so they're, you know, those issues will have to be dealt with as they come. But that's what it'll require.
So. And the way this is, correct me if I'm mistaken, but the way this is written, if I'm a landlord and I know it was a 60-day requirement, I'll start the clock early. I'm not gonna wait till the end of the lease. But I'll give the notification and they'll get there two months and it should, you know, work out better than it's been working out with only 15 days, so. Okay? If there are no further questions, go ahead.
Make a motion to approve regular agenda item number 6. Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have no opposed? Diane, please let the record show that agenda item R6 was approved 5-0 for the first reading of ordinance 1029. Okay. I know, we don't have a lot of time. We're gonna turn it to pumpkins? No. Okay, agenda item R7 is, as we know, we do our annual review and evaluation for merit pay determination for the village manager. I think all of you should have gotten something, a letter on this a couple of weeks ago. And I trust that all of you have had any conversations that you wanted to have with the village manager. So with that, we'll start with you, Jan.
Sorry, making a mess up here. So I went through the criteria and I wrote a couple of notes and want to share them with you because I think that our village manager has done an outstanding job. The first criteria, employee relations. My observation is consistent leadership, very little turnover, very high longevity and with an open door communication. Second criteria, image. Constant care and updating facilities, park signs, maintaining tree city designation. Image is also in the activities that are offered, right? Not just visible, but all the other things we're doing. And being able to attract new events, fresh ideas, fresh events to our residents is really important for that image as well. Long-range planning, the fact that we do strategic planning every year and Ray is the leader behind that and making sure that, you know, we look at not just one to two-year goals, but five years out, and what does that look like? And always keeping, you know, the vision on both. Financial management, being extra conservative and always looking at the what could go wrong scenarios. And then always end up being better than projected. Expenses are in line and not, or in line and not out of line. I don't know why I wrote that. Communication with, to me, council communication is always clear, open and appropriate. And then completion and direction on capital projects and our major projects are on target, on track. So I think, Ray, you've done an excellent job. And I, I, that's my yearly analysis for Ray for 2021, 22.
Okay.
I concur. And I'll just, just touch briefly, I mean, I think our village manager's done an outstanding job again this year in the employee relations area. The, the idea that people stay on is a significant indicator, just as Jan said. But the fact that we actually are bringing new employees on at a time when it's hard for businesses to hire, the government is always a challenging environment to hire people into. But I think one indication of an excellent place to work is that we're attracting people from the private sector to the public sector at a time when it's hard to hire even in the private sector. So that's a kudo to, certainly to Ray, but also to our HR administration and department there. Image-wise, you know, as we continue to grow, there are more and more challenges getting the word out. And it, it's, I think it's exciting that we've got a full-time PIO now. I think this is gonna be huge. We're gonna, already started putting out things on social media in a, in a very highly interactive fashion, so we're getting some feedback. It's, it's a, it's a great step forward, it really is. I think also that, you know, the long-range planning, like Jan just said, we've been doing it for 10 years, I think. And, and it gets better each year. But the fact that it's not just a result of some really good deliberations and document, it's actually executed. And the 80 to 90% completion is remarkable, especially when you consider it's during, coming out of the pandemic. It's a tough time to keep things going. So again, he's done an outstanding job, not only in the long-range planning, but also in the execution. Financially, I'm gonna guess that we are probably, we probably have the best financial position among all 39 cities in Palm Beach County. Yeah, don't tell.
We're just giving everything away tonight, right?
So, so for, insofar as the communications with the council is concerned, the 24/7 job and it's performed in a 24/7 manner. We're kept up to date and current on activities that we really need to know about so that when we're approached, we can answer factually, we can correct incorrect information. And that's, that's huge. Just generally, you know, Ray is always willing to do more than what's required of him in his position. Does his own independent work, a little bit of independent verification. I think it's a healthy thing and, and he's always willing to learn and improve. So I think we're very fortunate to have him and we've got a well-run city.
Well, my evaluations are basically fives on everything except for completion, direction of capital projects, cause I'm still holding the chandelier against them. But, and you can't go higher than five, but the communication stuff is, is great. I mean, again, you know, I ask for stuff like, hey, let me know if there's anything out there about BB guns and what's the thing, and I get information back and I appreciate that. And even more than that is just the trust and the confidence level that I have. I look in the newspaper and, you know, read stories like, oh, we went to a meeting tonight and we fired our manager. And the fact that, you know, I'm sure, I'm sure I speak for everyone up here, that thought has never entered our mind. In fact, my mind is, how do we keep them as long as we can? So although we got a four-on-one, I, just the highest or whatever we give, I, I say give.
Chandelier.
And then there's me. Now, um, yeah, chandeliers are in. No, I look at, you know, a lot of the same things that Councilwoman Roduski said when she went through her side of it. And longevity I always look at with everywhere. It's, when there's high turnover, I look at the top. And I've been involved in several organizations where there's lots of turnover and you know exactly where it comes from. So the fact that we have people that, before COVID, they were coming in, you know, 10, 15, 20 years that they've been here, so thank you. And Diane, thanks for sticking around as long as you have. The image, you know, we were talking about this and, and I was reminded that last year I told you is, you know, I wanted to see the softer side of you. And the fact that Councilwoman Roduski noted that you're open to change means that you are willing to move into that direction and change. You know, I think being an engineer, because everything's so linear and structured that sometimes it's hard to sway from that, so thanks for opening up for, for new things. It's either getting softer in your old age, one of the two. And then communication, I've said this before, I, I have never come in here not prepared and not knowing. And thank you very much for making sure we know what's going on and, and that we're prepared and even things that you hear so that we know how to prepare for things that come down the pipeline. So thank you. I'm not as generous as Councilman Valentes, but yeah.
Okay. Well, listen, it's, it's clear, we have an excellent manager. He's a great credit to the, to the village of Royal Palm Beach. He, and he continues to grow. I, I see it, because I spent a lot of time talking with him over the course of a given week. Sometimes I'll call him on the weekends and, but he's always there to, to try to respond to questions or situations that may come up. We've navigated, the last couple of years have been really challenging. And, but as, as this village, as the city, we, we've, we've come out pretty well. We've got a major project going on now, which is, is a century, century thing of building the new village hall. So we'll, we'll see how that goes. Hopefully, hopefully we can keep them on schedule. Ray pulls his hair out every week about that, but it's so far so good, I think. But with that said, along the line of what you said, my thought is always to make sure we don't, we keep him and let him know that he's appreciated. Even though when we have challenging days that we have to deal with challenging things, we work through that. Ray, I guess you're not looking for an increase in base pay, but you wouldn't mind the, I guess, a bonus increase? How's that work?
Yes, it does not get added to the base.
Doesn't get added to the base pay? Okay. For some. I'm trying to remember, what number will we be thinking about? 6.5%?
6.2.
6.2. That would be, okay. So. No, that's.
I'm sorry.
So should we peg to that or should we? What do you? All right, so we should do a 0 to 5 for you then? Okay, so with that, I would suggest we, we consider 5%.
I agree.
Now, look for.
I'm gonna go with the same that I always said, so it's consistent is, you know, Ray's done an exemplary job, so all staff that it should, his merit should be the same as all staff that does an exemplary job, so.
All right, well, that's Ray's problem to deal with.
Well, but that's.
But okay, I haven't said that.
Thank you, I like it for the.
I look, you're on the record. I look for a motion for 5%.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have no opposed? Diane, please let the record show that the, whatever is it, what is it called, merit bonus?
Merit pay.
Merit pay?
Yep.
Is, was approved for 5% and then in the overall council rate, Ray is doing an excellent job. Ray, continue to do a good job. Captain?
And it's highlighted too!
I appreciate you. Yes, yes, please, I appreciate you.
It was on the bottom of my traffic pass page, which is why I couldn't find it. Okay, real quick so we can all go. State Road 80 and 441, there were 31 rear-end crashes, there were 15 side swipes, and there were 13 angled, angled crashes. Okay, those combined for 59 out of the 73 reported crashes at that intersection. And then for State Road 7 in Okeechobee, there were 34 rear-end crashes, there were 13 angular or pulling out of a parking lot and 10 sides, side swipe. And those were a combined for 57 of the 70 reported there. So like I said, nothing major, nobody running red lights and, but that's what we have.
So the rear end and the side swipes are distraction?
Yep, yep. Thank you for going to find that, I appreciate it.
I apologize, I had it in the bottom of the page, I was looking in the back for an additional one and it was right in front of me.
No apologies necessary.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, if there's nothing else, okay, we stand adjourned, thank you all.
Thank you.